You didn't record the meeting. Okay, let's try this all over again. All right, good evening and welcome to the May 4th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. Time is 7:30. I ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation. Liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay. Has the board had a chance to review the minutes of the April 20th meeting?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Noticed one typo.
All right. What page five, last paragraph of section C says M Patel instead of M Pastel. That's your alter ego? All right, other than that, everything else, okay?
Looks good to me.
Okay, so I will offer a motion to accept the minutes with the one correction that Mr. Patel or Pastel pointed out.
A second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving right along, foliage on this evening. First item, Shops at Woodbury. Review and discuss extension requests for previously approved site plan. Special permanent ARB and Ridge Preservation for Mixed Use Development. Said property is located at the intersection of Route 32 in Losi Lane and is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Maps. Section 225 Block 1 Lot 34 dot 1 and 34 dot 22. I believe I saw this dress, because you know?
Yes.
All right. Go right ahead, sir.
Well, as we said in our letter, you know, we've been diligently trying to meet all the conditions of the approval to get the map sign. And then ultimately get to building permit to start construction on a phase one. We're close. But we're, you know, we just want to make sure that we don't run out of time prior to meeting those conditions. So we're requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approval conditional use and Ridge Preservation.
Okay. That would bring you to May 11th of 2023.
Yes.
All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. SBC? Okay. I no question, nothing to add, right Kelly? I saw your your notes. Okay, Natalie, same thing, right? We're good. Okay, so I'll offer a motion to grant a one-year extension to May 11th, 2023.
A second.
Second by Tommy, questions?
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Okay, that was painless.
Thanks.
All right, Steve, have a good night.
All right, you too. Thanks, everybody.
Next item, Popeyes Woodbury Center Public Hearing for Proposed Site Plan. Special Permit and ARB for the demolition of an existing pizzeria owner building and proposed construction of a 2,454 square foot Popeyes restaurant with drive-through. Said property is located 20 Center Drive Central Valley and is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map Section 225 Block 2 Lot 1 dot 2. This was published in the Paper of Record on Friday, April 29th of 2022. I believe I saw the team from Popeyes hop in. Okay. Just, uh. Actually, if you just give a real quick overview of what you guys are doing. I know we have some comments from our traffic consultant and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Drew Gammels. I am from the law firm of Keenan Bean here on behalf of Woodbury Chickens. We are here because we propose to construct a 2,454 square foot Popeyes restaurant with a drive-through on property located at 20 Center Drive in the Village of Woodbury. The project includes the demolition of the existing Pizzeria Uno. The property is located, as mentioned, in the Industrial Business Zoning District in the Woodbury Center Business Park. We are going to be taking away the existing Pizzeria Uno and constructing a brand new Woodbury Chicken facility or restaurant with a drive-through. We were last before the board on April 20th. Now we're here for our public hearing. We hope that after tonight's public hearing that this board will be comfortable closing the public hearing and instructing your consultants to prepare a resolution. So that's our goal for tonight's meeting. We also, just so everyone knows, have a public hearing set on May 12th before the Board of Trustees for a moratorium hardship waiver. So we are moving forward with that application as well. At the last meeting, a couple of comments were raised specifically focusing on concerns about the intersection of Center Drive. So we have gone back and responded to most of those comments and I will hand it over to our consultants to dive a little bit in more detail about our responses to the comments from Natalie and Phil Greeley. Specifically with us, we have Matthew Bersh from Dynamic Engineering and Kevin Savage from Dynamic Traffic.
Hi, how's it going?
All right, good evening.
So my name is Matthew Bersh with Dynamic Engineering Consultants. I'm a licensed professional engineer here representing the applicant. Can I share my screen real quick?
He hold on.
You should be able to.
Okay. So I know we're all familiar with the the site at this point. We've reviewed this a few different times, so I'll try to keep this part relatively short. This is an aerial map exhibit prepared by my office. It's dated today, 5/4/2022. For orientation purposes, north is to the left side of the page. The aerial map shows the existing conditions. Zooming in here to show the overall shopping center. And more specifically, our project is located where the existing Uno Pizzeria is on the western side of the site, just adjacent to Center Drive. Next, I'd like to show our our site plan rendering. This is also prepared by my office dated today, 5/4/2022. There's no changes to the site plan rendering since the last time it was presented. However, I would like to just quickly run through what we are proposing to refamiliarize the board and the public. We're proposing a 2,454 square foot Popeyes of 42 seats. Fast food restaurant is a special permitted use within the IB zone provided it's part of a commercial center, which we are. Also associated with the Popeyes development is a double drive-through. So two ordering stations associated with the drive-through lane as well as sidewalks adjacent to the building for pedestrian access. Trash enclosure in the southeast corner of the site. Parking both within the Popeyes pad area and surrounding the Popeyes pad as well as enhanced landscaping in and around the pad area. We are proposing what's showing us 13 queuing spaces in the drive-through lane. Really, you can get a 14th and 15th car in here. Whereas recent studies done by Dynamic Traffic, in conjunction with our office, found that seven to nine queuing spaces are required for a Popeyes. So we have adequate queuing in this location. The drive-through lanes are dimensioned at 10 feet wide, expanding out to 12 feet as you approach the ordering stations. There's also 18-foot customer drive aisles for access to the angled parking stalls, which are nine by 20 feet. And that drive aisle continues into a 12-foot bypass around the the outside of the drive-through lanes. Overall, in the shopping center, there's 1,227 parking stalls required. In conjunction with the proposed Popeyes, we are proposing 1,215 parking stalls. So there is a 1% deficit in the amount of parking that's being provided throughout the shopping center. However, that is an improvement of 20 by 23 parking spaces. So the previous deficit was 3%. We have enhanced that to 1%. There was a waiver that was previously granted, allowing for a reduction of up to 25% on a single lot with multiple uses. So we will need to continue requesting that waiver, even though it is an improvement. One comment that was brought up at the last meeting had to do with ADA parking stalls. We have found that the overall shopping center requires 23 ADA parking stalls. With the proposed Popeyes development, there's 30 throughout the entire development. If it's found that if the board or the board's professionals feel that a second ADA stall needs to be provided adjacent to the Popeyes due to the number of parking stalls in close proximity, we would be amenable to doing that. However, the overall shopping center on one single lot is compliant with the number of ADA parking stalls that are provided. We're providing pedestrian access by way of crosswalks from the ADA access aisle, curb ramps adjacent to the building, as well as a crosswalk, sidewalk and curb ramp leading over to the eastern part of the Popeyes pad, providing pedestrian access to anybody parking on the eastern side of this development. There is a question raised at the last meeting with regards to pedestrians potentially coming to this development from other shopping center or other uses in the shopping center. So I've changed over to that aerial map exhibit. In response to those comments that were received, we have decided that we would implement pedestrian crossing signs in a few different locations in general proximity to the proposed Popeyes use. So this is shown as as the Uno's, but it's in generally the same location. So we would be proposing a pedestrian crossing sign in this location for both the the east and westbound traffic. So within these landscaped islands here, which would be right by our our trash enclosure, which I can show you on here. So those signs would be located in this general area for anybody that is crossing this east-west drive aisle. The other location would be up along the north-south main drive aisle, we'll call it. So we were we're thinking that we could propose pedestrian crossing signs in these landscaped islands here to allow anybody that is coming from the shopping center area over to the west and to the Popeyes. So we would, we will be adding those signs to alleviate those concerns. Just flipping back to the site plan rendering. We have eliminated the proposed freestanding lights from around the Popeyes pad area as we found that the existing lights in the shopping center were recently replaced with new LED fixtures. Those existing lights adequately or provide adequate light to the proposed Popeyes development in conjunction with the proposed lighting that's along the facade of the building. Therefore, there's no additional freestanding lights being proposed. However, we would like to to note that we would reduce the freestanding light levels within or around the Popeyes pad area in conjunction with the overall shopping center. So whenever their freestanding lights are reduced to security levels, as long as it's outside the operating hours of the Popeyes, we would be willing to meet those same standards. There's numerous shade trees as well as shrubs and ornamental or I'm sorry, evergreen and ornamental deciduous shrubs surrounding the building. As previously noted at a prior meeting, we were granted a variance from providing a full five-foot landscaped island in front of the building. We are proposing two and a half feet along this northern edge of the facade. Five feet is required. We have the variance to provide two and a half feet. To quickly touch on some of the operations for the proposed use. We anticipate the the Popeyes will be open 10:30 AM to midnight, seven days per week. There will be approximately six to eight employees with on a given shift with eight being the max per shift with approximately three shifts per day. The primary delivery is everything except for chicken. This comes one time per week and the overnight hours outside of operating business hours. Delivery occurs in a WB 50 truck. The other delivery is a chicken delivery. This comes in a standard SU 30 box truck. And this comes two to three times per week, also in the morning non-business hours. We anticipate trash and cardboard will both be picked up approximately two to three times per week. This is scheduled with a private local hauler, so it would be in off-peak hours, typically daytime hours, possibly in the morning. As far as utility connections to the building, there's existing infrastructure around the vicinity of the proposed Popeyes that we will be utilizing for connections to water, sanitary sewer, electric and gas. There's a grease trap associated with the sanitary sewer as there's a domestic sanitary lateral as well as one that comes from the kitchen area. That grease trap is anticipated to be emptied about once every six months. So so twice per year or as needed, if it is found that it's needed to be more frequent than that. Our stormwater design, our stormwater engrading design were designed in a matter to in a manner to maintain the same drainage patterns as in existing conditions. So we would be using the existing infrastructure that's already in place. Roof leaders associated with the proposed building will, I previously had noted that they would go to ground. However, we have decided to agree to pipe the roof leaders to one of the existing inlets in the area to avoid the roof areas discharging just to grade. So we will be providing roof leaders, underground roof leaders to the existing infrastructure in the area. I'd like to note that we did have an opportunity to speak to the building official with regards to the the fire comments, the ESO comments. The building official agreed that sprinklers would not be required in this building per code. However, our drawings will be, will meet the fire code when submit, when they are submitted for building permits, they'll be fully compliant and we will agree to add a knox box to this development. So we have addressed the the fire and building officials' comments there. There was one more comment that we received with regards to either signing certain parking spaces for employees or certain areas for Uber Eats or even for people who their orders were taking a little bit longer than normal. So they're asked to pull up and park in a parking stall. Again, we haven't revised our plans to date, however, we, if the board feels that any of that signage is necessary or required, we're amenable to adding any such signage. So either for employees, curbside pickup or Uber Eats, anything like that, we would, we could add the the necessary signage. However, it's not currently part of the the Popeyes model. So that's all I have for the overall site and layout. I'd like to jump into the architecturals and I'll run through this quickly as they they haven't changed since the last time they were seen by the board. So this is a rendering showing the anticipated elevations at this location. This is prepared by Popeyes Corporate. It's undated. On the upper 80% of the building, you'll see there's a white ephesus finish on the bottom two and a half feet or so. There's a similar ephesus finish, but this is gray colored. Above the windows along the facades of the building are is a teal canopy. It overhangs those windows with downlit LED lighting. On the front of the building, this is the the north side. There is wood cedar paneling surrounding the the window looking into the the dining area. On the west side of the building, there is a brick veneer that breaks up the wall, breaks up really that that ephesus siding about halfway down that facade. This image is just the the opposite side of the building is the drive-through side. As you could see, there's the same ephesus finish as well as the same teal overhangs. The same brick veneer is in the drive-through area and there is an orange overhang over the drive-through window. Next, I'd like to touch on signage. Again, the signs haven't changed since the last time this was presented. On the eastern facade, there is this Louisiana Kitchen Seal with the the chicken right in the middle. This is 7.1 square feet on the north facade. I'm sorry, the west facade, which sorry, is over here. We have that same Louisiana Kitchen Seal with the the chicken in the middle. It's orange with a white lettering and a white symbol. On the brick veneer, we have a love that chicken graphic. This is 44.8 square feet. And then on the north facade, we have the Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Orange Channel Letters. And this is 40.9 square feet. We were granted a variance for the size of the sign. 40.5, 40.5 square feet is required. We're proposing 40.9. We were also granted a variance for the number of signs that we are proposing. We're allowed one sign per use. We're granted a variance to provide or to propose four different signs. I'd like to note that we are not proposing a panel on the existing freestanding sign out at the signalized intersection as there's currently no space on that freestanding sign. As a whole, we feel that this is an overall improvement to the the shopping center. It's a, it's a nice addition. It's a new offer to the area and it fits well with the surrounding uses. And that's all I I have for my direct.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody from the board have comments for Matthew?
Oh, sir.
No? Okay. Let's go to Dr. Phil then. I know there was some traffic questions that came up that we asked you to comment on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. So the applicant had submitted a response to our previous comments. That was dated April 27th. We reviewed that and provided a few additional comments. Some of which Matt addressed today relative to the signing with the pedestrians that we're recommending as a condition of approval. And the last remaining item, they had covered the turning tracks for getting in and out of this parking spaces. The capacity analysis of the intersection of Center Drive and the east-west access to Popeyes. So those were all addressed. The last remaining item was relative to site distance concerns for traffic coming out of the east-west roadway, heading westbound, primarily looking to the right or up Center Drive. The site distance is impeded. They provided some photos indicating you know, where those constraints were. And they have proposed removing a bush, a large bush to improve that sightline. They, their submission had a site distance of 170 feet, which is the stopping site distance for that location at the 25 miles per hour. We feel that they should provide a minimum of 200 feet that will require possibly some additional pruning of some branches, but it looks like it's attainable. And looking to the left, so so that would be looking to the right as you're coming out of the east-west access road. Looking to the left, site distance is pretty clear. There may be some minor pruning of some branches. But the critical one is looking to the right or also for vehicles coming down Center Drive, heading to, you know, towards the Coles building and that part of the center. So I think these can be conditions of any approvals. The applicant has shown the photographs and I think it's just maybe a little bit more of vegetative pruning. If the removal of the of the the large bush will allow an improvement in the sightlines. But I think we need some additional branch pruning, which you'll you'll see more as the leaves come on the trees this time of the year. So that's our recommendation and it can be, you know, a condition of any approval.
So that would be, Phil, that would be that they would maintain that site distances in perpetuity, right? Not just official clearing, but keep it?
That's correct.
Okay. And question, do you? I I understand the entire site has enough handicap, you know, parking spaces. But I mean, we can't really expect somebody that's in a handicap spot to park at Coles and break themselves. I mean, I think probably a second spot would be warranted here.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
And they have, they have the area to do it. So I would suggest that a second one be provided.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And then last, oh, your input on the like the customer pickup or the waiting line? I mean, pretty much every store in that that center already, Coles, all these staples, they all have pre-designed, pre-designated spots. So I can't imagine that at some point this this establishment would need them. So probably just do it now.
Yeah, I I think over in the area to the north where those 10 parking spaces are shown, I think is the the number on his plan. I think that would be the appropriate place to have that pickup area because it's visible and you know, they they may not do it now, but these things change over time and where the employees may have to bring it out to a car. I think that's where the the best place would be.
How's the board feel about that?
Yeah, I agree. I think they definitely need a spot or two for that.
It just seems to be the the thing these days, everybody.
It's the norm.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else from the board have questions for Phil? Okay, I know Natalie, I didn't ask you to prepare a report here. There wasn't much from your side that changed.
No, I did review the applicant's responses and he kind of went over a lot of the outstanding issues already, so I won't kind of reiterate them. The one thing that I just wanted to note is, again, that parking waiver is required, although it is a improvement to the existing waiver. So at the appropriate time, the board will have to decide on that. I would recommend when the applicant submits the revised plans, either Phil or I could just verify that that is the degree of waiver required. And so that would be a future, a future meeting. And that's.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody from the board have a question for Natalie?
No.
Okay, as this is a public hearing, I am going to go out to the public. If you wish to speak, you need to state your full name for the record. Any questions are addressed to the board. Please be courteous and keep your comments under three minutes if you could. So with that said, public comment on the Popeyes Woodbury Center application. Just unmute yourselves. You have the ability. Next call for the Popeyes Woodbury Center Public Comment. Last and final call for Popeyes Woodbury Center Public Comment. Seeing no chat comments or nobody unmuting themselves, I will offer a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Tommy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. While this application is subject to the moratorium and I do know they have a request in front of the board to be exempt from that. That request has not been granted yet. So with that said, the board could authorize counsel to draft a motion, a resolution of approval after that. Wow, why did I stumble over my words tonight? I've done this like 100 times before. Does the board feel we have enough information to we just cannot take, we could not take action on that until the Village Board decides to grant the hardship waiver or not? Everybody satisfied?
Yeah, we could draft the resolution and make that contingent.
Yes, we we just, we we can't vote on it until the Village Board takes their action. So, okay, I'll offer a motion to have counsel draft a resolution of approval.
I'll second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so to Matthew and Drew and team, we will get you back on the agenda or once you finish with the Village Board.
I understood. If we finish with the Village Board on.
I understood. Um if we finish with the Village Board on May twelfth, is there any chance we'd get on the May eighteenth or is that just too quick of a?
Probably not. There's about fifteen people that are in in the queue in front of you right now trying to get on. And then uh Attorney Norton needs some time to review, to draft the resolution circulated amongst the um consultants to make sure their input and comments. So the timing just wouldn't work out. We could probably get you on the meeting after that, but otherwise it'd be too soon.
And I'm sorry, just one other follow-up question. Would the resolution include A R B uh review and approval as well?
Yeah, that would all be worked into one uh resolution.
Perfect.
So it's it's contingent on two things. It's contingent on you guys getting approval from the Village Board for your hardship waiver and getting these minor corrections or submissions that were brought up tonight uh into the consultant so that they could be reviewed at the same time and that your application can be complete.
Great, understood. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, we'll see you. We'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you too. Um I will, the next uh item on the agenda is Woodbury Commons R M U. Um I will preface with that the the applicant has requested a one-month stay or one-month extension. Uh being this was already noticed, uh we can go open key, open the public hearing and accept comment from the public. And we will just extend the public hearing uh for a month. Um so they can continue to do their research, right? I believe that would, that's okay, right, Kelly? So this is Woodbury Common R M U, uh public hearing for proposed amended site plan and special permit for an increase in size of the previously approved retail merchant units from fifty square feet to a hundred square feet within the Woodbury Commons Shopping Center. Said property is located on Route thirty-two in Central Valley and is known in the Village Woodbury Tax Maps. Section two-two-five, block one, lot seventy dot two, and section two-two-six, block one, lot one. All right. So again, this is public hearing for public comment for the Woodbury Commons R M U application. Being I know pretty much everybody that's on the list. I don't think anybody's here, but next comment, next call for Woodbury Commons R M U. Last and final call for Woodbury Commons R M U Public Comment. I see no chat comments and nobody unmuting themselves to speak. I will offer a motion to extend the public hearing to our May uh April eighth meeting.
June first?
Or June or June first, whatever.
Just keep behind your toes, Kelly.
I wanted to see if you were listening.
You you had me there when you went backwards.
When I was like April, what?
Uh how about we extend the public hearing to the June first uh planning board meeting?
Let's go.
All in favor? All right, you gotta have some fun with it. You can't all can't all be. All right, moving right along. Next item on the agenda, Spitzer slash Millwork Showroom. Review and discuss revised documents submitted for proposed special permit and amended site plan to permit a change in use to a Millwork showroom. Said property is located at two seventy-nine Route thirty-two in Central Valley and is known as Village Woodbury Tax Map. Section two-thirty, block four, lot four dot two. Good evening, Mr. Hartman. It's been a, it's been a few months. You've seen your last in front of us.
Yeah.
So let's get right, let's get right into it, Larry. What are we, what are we looking to do? What are you looking to do? What do we need to do?
Um so this was basically front of the board, I believe approximately maybe three or four months ago. Um so basically, in a nutshell, they're trying to convert existing building um which was used for auto repair and auto showroom um to sell, for the sale of cars. It was used until for the previous owner, the new owner wants to keep the rear of the building as an auto repair shop. And wants to have the front for his own business, which is basically he's um selling doors. Um basically a trimming company sells doors and uh moldings and uh all kinds of trim. So they're not gonna manufacture anything over there. That's gonna be a display. Um so basically I did provide floor plan showing that he's gonna change around a little bit of the exterior of the interior. Um so it fits with his office needs. He added some ba- bathrooms and all of that. That's as far as the usage and as far as the interior renovations outside. Um is gonna keep it the um the entire building the way it is. With exception, he's gonna remove all the existing signs regarding the repair shop. And he's gonna add his name on the clothing and his name on the windows, his logo, as detailed in the booklet that I provided. Additionally, there was an existing um street sign um that he wants to put his name. He used to be the old tenant. When he bought the building, um he took off the old tenant's name, the two poles are still, are still there. He wants to put up his name. Um and that in the exact same area. Um as far as the comments, I believe we addressed all the comments regarding the site. Um regarding the floor plan, regarding the interior, regarding the usage. Um regarding the extent of the changes, uh we did provide a um site plan, which wasn't the four months ago, we did provide that and everything's in the booklet. And I did, I do believe he provided a response by item by item. We got comments from um we got comments from uh McCrua, the Luda, and Michelle, and we got also comments from Nelson. Um we put, and we provided the response to each comment from both comments, from our set of comments.
So everybody with the board is familiar where this site is. This is the old exclusive motorsports across from the uh Woodbury, Monroe, Woodbury School District headquarters over there. This is where this is, this is where this is going. Um so yeah, Larry did provide us a lot of information on uh is, is I think there's gonna be a lot of um talk about this one. There's um just because of the site, what was previously used for, what it was zoned for and some of the uh waivers or variances that were issued with the previous site. So Natalie, why don't we just, we'll dig right into this one.
Sure, uh that was a good way to sort of preface everything. Um there are some threshold issues with the application that I think require discussion. Um our comment lists or uh memo lists other detailed comments um that we think can be addressed with future submissions, but there are some, like I said, questions that we need to um provide some guidance on to the applicant and how they should proceed. So um they have clarified with this most recent submission that the proposal is essentially to uh convert a portion of the existing building to Millwork Showroom and also uh maintain two auto body repair shops at the rear of the building. Um both both uses, the auto body repair and showroom, which would be considered retail. Our special permits use it, special permit uses permitted in the H B zone. Um we look back through our records about the auto body repair um and essentially going back to two thousand and six. Um our files indicate that the auto body repair was existing and had been for a long time. And that's actually quoted from our files, just in case anybody was curious. Um however, um it's not clear if with the conversion from um Millwork uh or from sorry, auto retail to um Millwork Retail, there's also additional review required for um the auto body portion of the building and how that impacts the site. So we recommend you review that with council. Um we had two comments on full criteria related to this project on whether they could be considered existing non-conforming. Um which we'll defer to Kelly on, but I'll just review them with you quickly. Um the first is with respect to coverage and uh essentially the maximum permitted uh per code is sixty-five percent um associated with automobile repair use. Uh the site is developed currently to eighty-four point nine percent according to the applicant's plans. Um again, it's not clear if that's existing non-conforming since the applicant is not proposing any changes. Um the second is with respect to the front yard setback. Uh the applicant's correspondence describes a um building overhang that extends one point seven feet within the fifty-foot open to the sky requirement of the code. Um they indicate that this is a result of the D O T takings associated with Route thirty-two improvements. Um so we'll look for guidance on how those two non-conformities should be handled. Um with respect to parking, uh the applicant's plan currently shows sixty-two spaces with six spaces in the front of the building. Um at, as we discussed at your last meeting, uh prior Z B A decision uh determined that parking in the front front yard would no longer be permitted upon conversion of parking from static sales to consumer and employee parking. Um so those six spaces that are shown on the plan currently should be removed. Um once those are removed, there's an available fifty-six stalls that are shown on the plan. And the applicant's calculations indicate that only fifteen are required for the Millwork retail use. So one of the things that we're recommending that the board consider with the applicant is whether or not the forty-one spaces, you know, remaining after the fifteen are deducted for the retail are actually needed to support the auto body repair shop. And if not, and there's an excess of parking, then you might want to consider maybe with input from Phil and, you know, sort of with the applicant's buy-in that there could be an opportunity to remove that paved area within the front of the building. And our memorandum kind of indicates that there's three purposes that that serves. One is, um you know, it eliminates the opportunity for parking in the front yard, which isn't permitted. Um it decreases the impervious coverage, which is already over the maximum allowed. And it also improves compliance with the landscaping requirements of your code. So that's something that we think that the board could consider with applicant. Um another issue that was raised previously and that the applicant responded to is uh regarding loading berths. Um so essentially their correspondence indicated that because the Millwork portion of the building is less than five thousand square feet, which is the threshold in the code for requiring a loading berth. Um they don't believe that a loading dock is required. Um however, it wasn't clear to us whether or not that um code requirement was specific to the entire building area or specific to the individual uses that it describes, which are office, retail, and service establishments. Um if it does pertain solely to the uses, then um it wasn't really clear if the auto body repair is considered a service establishment. Um so we think that needs to be flushed out as well. Um some of our other sort of threshold comments had to do with the landscaping requirements of the code and again, whether since the applicant isn't proposing to change anything, whether or not any non-conformities could be considered existing. Um so that's something that kind of needs to be flushed out as well. Um the applicant is requesting waivers for certain site plan requirements of your code. Um we think you can consider those at the appropriate time. I just wanted to kind of note that for you. Anything that remains. Um we looked at the water and sewer calculations and we requested a minor revision to those, but in general um considering that the auto body repair is existing, really the change in use from Millwork Showroom or I'm sorry, from auto sales to Millwork sales, um we would expect uh the change in usage to remain you know, either be pretty consistent or actually be less if, you know, car washing was required for the car sales. Um on the signage, we asked the applicant to confirm if there are any deviations from your code requirements. Um and they're listed on our memo and whether or not they need either an interpretation from the building department or variance. Um some of those details, I think, still need to be provided to kind of confirm that. Um but otherwise, there could be questions that are raised um in particular to like the window signage and things like that. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Would have questions for Natalie?
Yeah, I have one, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um with the cha- change in use, um is landscaping required or should it be considered?
Oh, I that's, there's some, I hate to put Kelly on the spot, but I definitely think there are some uh threshold issues as far as pre-existing non-conforming that are going to need to be flushed out here. While I understand we're going from retail to retail, we're going from two different types of uh retail. And I think reading the Z B A's decision on the front was pretty I guess, pretty uh pointed about front parking in the in the, that it was supposed to be static parking only, not for live parking for uh the for the building. Um and then being the retail use is changing, does that necessarily keep them exempt from not requiring the front landscaping buffers in that?
So that's a very good question. So what really needs to happen, as you, I'm sure everybody has seen or Rich, you probably recall when this was Exclusive Motors and went back and forth before uh the Z B A. Um just that that was supposed to be for static parking. It ended up going to trial and all of that, but um regardless, so back then it was auto body repair and that also included um a stall used for body shop. I think one thing that needs to be taken into account is that this is now becoming two um auto body repairs, so that the board should be considering that, which brings in the site plan you um review for that aspect as well. And then in Natalie's memo, she noted several things about whether or not these illegally pre-existing non-conforming conditions. And I think that some of that needs to be worked out with the building department and see what was originally approved and make sure whether or not they're legally pre-existing non-conforming conditions. Um I think a good suggestion that Natalie brought up was to tear up some of that pavement, so it's not misused and, you know, so the building department isn't out there e- every week trying to say you can't use these parking spots and put in some of that landscaping so that they better comply with the code. Even if it is determined to be a pre-existing non-conforming condition, that would bring it more into compliance with the code. Um so just different things that we need to work out with the building department and flush that as part of the application.
All right, and uh Larry, I I have a question for you. Um when I spoke to the building inspector, the last time the building inspector spoke to the owner, he was looking to rent out the the bays themselves, the mechanics. Now, I believe your narrative said it would be two auto shop, two auto repair shops. So is it going to be, he's going to be looking, because there's multiple bays there. Um so is he looking to rent each bay out to their own mechanic or is he looking to bring two different mechanic companies into that building or some combination of that?
So basically, he has five bays in the back and on page four of the booklet, I provided the floor plan. So basically, it's set up now as a auto body repair shop. And he wants to uh rent it for two individuals. So they both have, it has two offices, so work out perfectly for two um auto bodies, but he wouldn't rent by bay. Um because he wants, he just want, he just applied, that's what he wants to do. He wants to rent her out for two, if he's, he's looking for tenants, if he's gonna get approved for two auto body shops.
Well, because I think it makes a big difference to his board, because in in essence, it's almost three businesses running off that site now. I granted two of them order repair. I get two of them will be mechanics, but they're gonna be different entities. So does that mean there's gonna be both mechanics are gonna have their own tow trucks there? Are they gonna have, you know, different number of employees, different types of repair work they they do? Um anybody that's been around here for a while know that site was a mess when it was before your, before your guy, before the the guy who owns it now took it over and he did a lot of cleaning up, but um what it was operating previously, they were all sorts of old cars, misused cars, broken down cars. There was a boat. There was a boat parked back there. There was, there was all sorts of stuff. So I think we want to make sure we uh correct some of the sins of the past here uh and really understand what's gonna be happening there and how much volume they're gonna be looking to do and are they gonna have enough space to store these cars like? Um you know, there were some repair companies that have contracts on the thruway. And they'll tow a car off the thru and they'll store it there for a couple of days, waiting for an owner to come claim it or whatever happens uh to it. So I think some ideas the board's gotta take into consideration and looking at the overall site plan and use um here.
I think size of tow trucks that would be stored there also.
Yeah, like, I'm just throwing it out there because it bucks up, I mean, I know both sides are commercial, but it bucks up against uh residential in the in the rear there. Um so.
Well, and one thing too is how is what you just touched on is how long the cars would be there. So some of the repair companies, you know, you you bring your car in and you wait, they fix it and you leave. Um but other places, you know, the car sits in the parking lot for three weeks while you're waiting for a part. So you want to see if there's, you know, how long the cars are gonna be there, what protections there's going to be for the cars that are waiting for repairs.
So you want to see if there's, you know, how long the cars are gonna be there, what protections there's going to be for the cars that are waiting for repairs. Is there gonna be an impound lot, things like that?
Correct. Let's make it clear. It was an existing auto body repair shop before and it's gonna stay auto body repair shop. And it's been there for a very long time and it is gonna be a lot nicer than whatever it was there before. As you, as you all mentioned, it was a mess. The owner of the building is gonna have his front, is gonna have his shop, his showroom in the front. Um, I'm sure the, the building is gonna look perfect, okay? So basically, again, it wasn't existing. It's, he's just leaving it the way it is. The reason he's leaving it is because it's set up like an auto body shop. Was built as an auto body shop. For him to do anything else is gonna require putting in a tremendous amount of money. That what, that, that's what it was built. When he bought it, that's what it was. That's why he wants to keep it. Definitely gonna be a lot nicer than anything that was there, right? Regarding the, regarding the, um, tow trucks and everything, he does not have any, a possible tenant yet. He's looking for some one. Again, he can't really look until he gets approved, until the site gets approved. But that's his goal. Once he has a tenant, he'll know a little bit more, but if there's a condition, it shouldn't be a compound. If the ZBA has the authority to, uh, impose such a restriction, then let it be. But again, we're not looking for us restrictions that, um, just to put any restrictions on it. But if there's any particular thing that the board has in mind, that they kind of, previous owner neglected and they want to make sure that it doesn't get neglected with the new auto body repair. Okay, it can be, um, we can put it in as kind of some, uh, some restriction order to prevent that particular, um, thing to happen again. But again, you can't just take, it's, it's gonna be a body shop. So they're definitely gonna have cars. It's not a mechanic where you fix something, you come in and you fix, it's a body repair. So it's most likely gonna take time to fix a car. That's what it was there before. He's, he's not doing, it's, it's just gonna be a lot nicer, um, than the previous owner.
As a body shop, is he gonna have the, because I know they used to, I don't know if they still do, they had a, I think a, what do you call it, a paint booth? So he would need the DEC permits for that? Is, are, is he still gonna look to be doing that?
If he's gonna need the DEC permit, he's definitely gonna apply for that. He's not gonna look for any shortcuts.
Okay, so he, but he's still, he's planning on it being like body?
I can't say about that because I don't, I don't have an owner. I don't have a potential tenant. But definitely, there's not gonna be any shortcuts. If, if he's gonna wanna do a boot, if there's an existing boot that he needs to update or stem it, he's gonna go to DEC, he's gonna file for it.
It seems like we keep using two, two terms and, uh, is it gonna be auto repair or body shop?
Two totally different things.
Yeah, we keep using interchangeable.
I believe it was an auto body shop. The previous owner had a auto body, as I'm looking at the sign, yeah, it says auto body. I look at the sign of the previous owner. He had in the front, he was selling cars. He had all kind of old cars, new cars, used cars. He would have a mechanical shop and he had an auto body. So he had basically the entire thing. He sold the car, he fixed it, repaired and, you know, and did the body work. If, if we're gonna find an repair shop, obviously we're gonna, we're gonna go for a repair shop, but I can't know which tenant it's gonna be. It's definitely gonna be either a body shop or a repair shop.
Okay, so it's gonna be one or, or the other or both, okay. But Larry, you have to understand to this board, it matters. You know, the board's not gonna just blanketly say you guys can do whatever you want there. You know, a, a repair shop and an auto body shop are two totally different things. Or an auto, a, a, a repair, an auto body shop has sort, all sorts of flammables and other materials that are stored on site for the, the finishing and painting of cars. They have the fumes that are associated with the downdraft hoods and all those things. So this, that's, you know, regardless of what was there before, you're in front of us now for site plan approval. You're asking this board to approve what you're looking to do there. So regardless of what was done there in the past, you're here now. So this board is going to, is, is perfectly within its purview to, to dive down these questions and try to figure out what exactly is going on at that site. Nobody's looking to put unreasonable restrictions or restrictions on the site. But we also are allowed to do our due diligence and understand what's coming into the community and what's gonna be backed up behind residential, properties. You know, a mechanic shop, cars tend to come and go, they're there day until. Auto body, auto body. Can sit there for weeks. You're gonna have cars that are leaking fluids. You know, we just went through this at another site that they, that the building inspector just had to have them cleaned up too. You know, you can tell us that your owner has the best of intentions. Everybody has the best of intentions. Unfortunately, things happen. People don't claim their cars, insurance companies don't pay. It takes six months to get apart from Germany these days. That's why this, this board is gonna ask out those, those questions. You know, you, you take a ride down thirty-two, you look at, uh, one of some of the repair shops down there, look at, there's burned out hulks of cars sitting down there for six months to a year waiting to get cleaned by somebody. You know, and this is right in the middle of the business district in Woodbury. So that is why the board is asking these questions to try to better determine what you're going to be using there. And to me, that comes to car storage, because if it's an auto body shop, cars are gonna tend to be stored there longer, requiring more spaces and leaving less spaces coming going than if it's a repair shop. Cars are usually in and out within a day or two, a week at the most. So to me, it plays into the whole site plan and what you guys are looking to do and what you're looking to have, to have approved. And that's all this board is trying to do right now.
Again, I'll, I'll have to ask the owner, um, regarding, um, if, if he has to use between, if he has to choose between the two, it was my understanding that if they had both of them existing, that, um, he was able to look, um, for either, either of those two tenants.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna ask the building inspector to weigh in on the pre-existing, nonconforming and what uses would continue to be allowed here. That's one of the things that we have to go to the building inspector. But I'm also trying to, believe it or not, help you out, because I don't want you to have to come back in front of this board because a use changes, or you guys want to do something different because you got a different tenant that wants to come, come into you. And now all of a sudden you went from a repair to, uh, an auto body shop or, or vice versa. So that's why I'm just trying to get the details out there now, get you what you need and move forward from there.
Correct. So again, as I said, if I have to choose between the two, the board says, if the, the pre-existing does not work over here, or whatever reason, it used to be both. But if, if in any case, um, the board says that, um, whatever the pre-existing does not work and I have to choose between the two, I'll have to ask the owner to apply for one. But if it does work, obviously we would wanna have, um, the option to get either of the two. It's very, I mean, it is different, but it's very similar also. It's the same, for that reason, they had both of them in the back. So again, if I have to choose one, I'll ask the owner. If we can have both, if we can have either, because the pre-existing applies over here, we definitely would wanna have the option to choose one of the two.
Okay, and as you go forward with the options, you can also keep in mind the potential for tow truck.
Yeah, I mean, that's tow trucks, the car storage.
Yeah, impound lots, it does a lot.
And that's, and that's why, again, that's why we're asking these questions, because your submittal is gonna have to show where do we plan on putting an impound, impound, what, you know, slash storage lot? Where do we plan on keeping, even if it's just a single, you know, pickup tow truck? This is what's gonna be kept, you know, on, on site. You know, if it's going to be, uh, um, an auto body shop, you know, we're, we're gonna want to follow up on the comment because they're gonna wanna know about the numbers of thinners and chemicals and everything else that are kept, kept on site, because those are very volatile. And when those things get, they get going, they get going pretty, they get going pretty good and then they go pretty quick. So they're gonna wanna know about that. And then that would potentially kick in, does it need sprinklers? Does it not need sprinklers? Are you going to have to upgrade? Because it's there now, doesn't mean what they were doing then is right. Now you're here and unfortunately you may have to pay for the sins of the past, is, is what I'm getting at.
Hundred percent. I mean, when it comes to those things like hazardous material, sprinkler system will definitely deal with that with the building department. We, Harpan, as I have designed multiple, um, shops like that and we did, I know how to comply with it. But that would definitely, I will have to show for the building department. Once we have the tenant, there's, um, I know there's hazardous material limitations, there's, um, square footage limitations as far as sprinkler and all of that. We've done that, but at that, it's very hard now to know. I'll definitely, once you get a tenant, apply for the building department, get it all done and, uh, make sure it complies with the code.
I just wanted to raise a couple of things, um, for everybody's awareness. The code lists, uh, automobile repair as a permitted special permit use and it doesn't distinguish necessarily in the HB zone between auto body. So I think that's kind of a follow-up for me and Kelly, just to look at the other zoning tables to see if auto body is distinguished anywhere in the code. Otherwise, I think what you were saying, Chris, is regardless, as part of your special permit, uh, review, those could be conditions considered, you know, reflective of the auto body repair versus automobile repair. And then the other thing I wanted to just note for everybody is that there are, there is a section in the code that regulates automobile service stations and repair garages. And there are specific, uh, requirements in the code for how many wrecked vehicles could be on the site at a given time. Also, there's no dead storage or parking of vehicles shall be permitted, except vehicles awaiting immediate service or repair. So I didn't really list those in my memo currently, because I wasn't sure, you know, whether or not the review of the auto body repair was current or if it was just specific to the millwork. But, you know, I'll make sure I include those next time. And, um, also for, for Larry's purposes, um, you should look at the code for those requirements as well, so you can comply.
Yeah, we'll definitely comply.
Then the millwork is just gonna be just display, right? He'll have a bunch of windows, doors and trim that someone can come in, look at and pick out for their home.
Correct, but they don't wooden store, that will be strictly showroom. Once they choose it, they'll order it and be, um, delivered to the hu- to the house. So the doors, not windows, but doors, trim, um, railings, anything that has to do with millwork.
All right, but no fabrication, no storage, nothing?
No fabrication, no storage, no.
Okay. So I guess the question comes up too with the, with the front parking, with the static parking.
That was definitely a mistake. We'll remove it. I, I missed it. I gave it to the site engineer and told him to remove it. But, um, it was a total mistake. We have more than enough parking. We don't need those six spaces. We'll definitely remove it.
Would you, would you be amenable to doing some sort of landscaping or something in the front there to soften that edge?
So much money cleaning up the site. It's not something he's definitely excited about. If we ha- again, if we have to, we'll do it. It's a lot of money. He taught, this whole process is gonna be much easier and it's not gonna be so costly. He already spent a tremendous amount of money cleaning the site. Again, he owns it already for over a year, trying to get it approved. If we don't have to, he definitely doesn't wanna do it. If you have to, we'll do it, that's all.
I think that's, Kelly, that's gonna come down to determination from the building inspector, right? If that pre-existing, nonconforming carries.
Right, so we'll have to compare and then see what's there. But we'll, we'll do the research on that prior to the next time this is on, um, your agenda so that we have responses to some of these, now that we have a, a bit of a better idea of what's going on and that there's an understanding that it's not gonna be used for parking, stuff like that. I think that was the biggest concern for tonight was just, at least on, one of my biggest concerns was so that everybody was on the same page, that, that park could not be used for parking. So now we just continue on and process the application and come to conclusions on those items, so the applicant can move forward.
I guess another big, uh, topic's gonna be here is the graphics in the front of the window. So I guess it's a vinyl, deep vinyl, something that's going across the, the top couple of feet.
Basically, he wants to cover the, the top windows on the, and those, uh, transom windows at top with a black from the inside, the black vinyl sticker and have his, the only thing that is gonna pop out is word trim X in the middle. Rest of it is just gonna be a vinyl from the inside of the window.
Have you done the square, I, because it's, the sign code, I believe, only allows a certain percentage of window to be covered with graphics or details. I don't, I don't remember seeing on your submission in your book if you did the percentage of the window that is gonna be covered with the vinyl. Yeah, it's gonna be something we're gonna need to, to, to determine, because, uh, I actually, the building inspector's going through this on another application now. And there is a threshold with percentage of window that could be covered.
Question, the fact that the previous owner had the same amount of windows covered as you see on page seven, does that help in any way?
No, it's again, just because someone had it before you doesn't give you any, doesn't give you any, you know, rights to, you know, if it was wrong what he had, it doesn't mean you can continue it to be wrong, unfortunately.
Okay.
That's been well established.
Okay.
And I know there were some questions with the sign, oh, square footage of the sign itself too.
Uh, we did correct that. It should be less than twenty square, um, so it's now a total of nineteen point oh six.
Go on where the existing sign used to be, right?
No, first, there's, there's two signs. There's one, the word trim X, that is gonna be on the building, right above the door. That's shown on page number eight. I don't know if you guys have the booklet that I provided.
I'm looking.
So page number eight, you can see the word trim X, the total square of that thing is gonna be less than twenty square, uh, feet. So it, it was originally twenty-four, so we reduced it to be less than twenty. That's the sign on the building. Then if you take a look on sheet, so page number nine gives the specifications of the sign and the calculation of the square footage. And if you take a look at page number ten, the area where the old sign used to be, he wants to put in the trim X and possibly the two tenants, if he's gonna find two tenants.
One of the things, um, we noted in our memo is like, although freestanding signs are permitted a maximum of twenty square feet, it also has, um, additional requirements for the identification panel and then the individual tenant panels and they are restricted to ten and four accordingly. So that was one of the details that we requested be clarified in our memo also. I think currently the rendering you provided says to be determined, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. So basically, what are, what are the restrictions on those signs that it can be, the main sign can be ten square feet?
Per the code, yes.
Per code could be ten square feet.
Like the, the ident- the mall, it's actually called a mall identification sign is the ten and then the individual tenants below. So the auto body repair, automobile repair uses will be four square feet.
Okay, looking at it, it's gonna be kind of tough, because in, unless he replaces the poles, in between the poles now, there is approximately eight feet. So if, which means if you, you limit it to four feet, that means the height can only be six inches high to get that. So is there any way, I mean, we can comply with the top one and not have the tenants ones put up. If they do, is there any way to file for a, uh, three years for that or? Or special approval or something?
I believe that would be what was required. If it was at variance with the code, then you would need, uh, a, a variance.
Um, it's not something that we're interested in going right now. We don't even know if we have a tenant, if we do. As of now, we're just gonna file that it's gonna comply and be less than four square, less than four square feet. We're not gonna put anything on. And if we want it to be more, we're gonna have to file later for a ZBA.
Natalie, is the, um, how are the sign, are the signs measured based on the graphics and the letters? Or the, um, the full sign itself or some other variation?
Sure, if there is not like a clear delineation of the boundary of the sign, say it's not a rectangle or something like that and it's just individual letters, then the code requires you to actually draw that delineation around it and then it's calculated from that area. So just encompassing all of the sign, even if it's a graphic, not, not just a letter.
Got it.
And I, I see a note, they'll be internally illuminated, so they'll just, they'll be on, at, at some point, they'll get turned off at night, I guess.
What is that?
The sign's gonna be internally illuminated, correct?
The ones on the building or the ones near the road?
The one near the road on the white poles.
There will be, I'll say, wait, so. Yeah, it will be internally illuminated.
And so I thought the, I thought the, the building signage is the, is the internally illuminated one.
And that will be, that will be, that would have lights in back of the actual letters. So you can only see the, block the actual light, but see the shine of it coming out from, out from the back of the letters.
Backlit, okay, got it.
Yeah.
And would you, would you be changing any of the site lighting? Because it was a dealership before, so they tend to be a little bit more well lit than a normal.
Well, I tended to change any of the lighting. I don't see any intensive lighting, there's one, one light on the actual pole of the sign for the front parking. Other than that, I don't see any intensive lighting, but it was definitely not planned to change anything.
Okay. What else from the board?
Hey, Chris, I think, I think you covered most of this, but the prior auto body business, there was no separation from the Mercedes sale cars, from the auto body damaged cars, and it was an eyesore from thirty-two being Main Street. I think the designated spaces, if they go with an auto body, I think it should be a nice, either fenced in area or landscape. We cannot view the damaged cars from Route thirty-two. It was, it was a real eyesore, it was a mess, the prior business, so I think.
I, I agree with that, I think there should be some kind of privacy screening up.
Yeah.
But I think we'll cross that road when we get there. But I, I think when you, when they, when he speaks to the owner and they make a decision on where they're gonna look or what they're looking to do, if they're gonna look to keep both the repair and the auto body place, I think they should update the plans to show specifically where they plan to store those cars. Because you do have twenty-two spots on one side that go right up to the street line. So I don't think we'd want broken down cars sitting right along thirty-two. So Larry, I think that's something you may want to sharpen your pencil with a little bit. And see, I also have a, I also have a silly question for you. You have the two dumpsters in the rear. Is there enough room between those last parking spots and where those dumpsters are in the rear? Because I think it's fifteen, it's hard to tell, there's a, there's a dimension from the one corner to the rear of fifteen feet. I don't know if that dimension carries all the way over. Is there enough room to get a truck back there? Because those dumpsters are gonna need to be in an enclosure as well, they just can't be sitting out.
This plenty of spaces, those fifteen feet go all the way, but the proposed dumpsters are all the way in the corner. It's a lot more than fifteen feet in that area.
That's just asking, because I didn't see a dimension back there. Natalie, I'm pretty sure that the dumpsters are required to be in an enclosure, aren't they?
That is a typical requirement.
Yeah. There's something else to sharpen your pencil with.
Regarding the site lighting, I, I noticed there, other than that, the, the sign on the street, there's also one to the south, I guess it's southeast, as well as the southern portion that butts the side lot line. You know, those seem pretty high up and, and commercials. So just curious how that will affect since that butts up to residential zone.
Oh, the round ones you're talking about, Evan?
No, they're not round, I don't think they're round. They're, you know, they look like big square, I forget the type of lighting they are, but big square floodlights, they're pretty high up on the poles.
Again, not gonna change anything, but I don't think it's gonna affect residential. Because if you look at page seven, if you look at page seven, you can see actual those poles you're talking about. And it's much lower than any of the, of the trees that divide between the residential in the back and, and the building and the site. Page seven, you can see, it's hard to see, it has that silver pole.
Yeah.
So it's, it's lower than the surrounding trees that divides the residential enclosure.
Just, just as a note, Larry, this board typically requires, I believe it's one, one foot candle at the property line. So, you know, you may just wanna double check.
One foot candle, what?
At the property line.
It's a point one foot candles.
Sorry, decimals matter, decimals matter. I had the one right, I just put the decimal in the wrong, I just put the decimal in the wrong spot.
And then me and Natalie just jumped on you for it.
Too many things rattling around up here to try to remember where the decimal goes on the candle, foot candle. Just, I know we're throwing a lot at you, Larry, but we're trying to get it all at you at once, you don't have to. Is the board okay with the colors on the signs? The, the gold, the white and the black, not gold, I guess, what would you call that color, Larry?
It isn't the gold family, but it's not, you know, it's not a jewelry gold, it's just a. I'm not sure. But it's basically the same color as his logo, so we keep, we're trying to keep that gold color, goldish color that he has in his logo for years.
Everybody all right with the colors? Yeah, I got no issue with the colors. Just, just making sure, don't wanna slap Larry with that like two week, submission later. Anything else we're missing, guys and gals? No, okay. Anything for us, Larry?
Well, I'll be special again, we'll try to follow whatever's recommended. I did put that, I did wrote down some of the notes, particular the coverage, what I've wrote down. And if there's, missed anything, let me know. Regarding the spaces in the front, which is not a problem, but it wasn't supposed to be there. I have to calculate the coverage of the windows, the two windows, top windows that is going to be covered. The closure of the dumpsters, make sure there's a point one foot candle at the property line. And let me ask one question, is it a possibility that once we get a tenant, you wanna get the millwork going? Because that's, that's what he, that, that, that's what he wants to move in. It's his company, he doesn't even have a tenant for the auto body yet. Is there such a thing, once there gets a tenant that we, before he does anything, that he's got to come to the board, then we'll know better if that person is gonna have cars, not have cars, have a truck, I left her, have a full plan presented in depth, exactly. So, you know, so he can kind of get his millwork going before, with the restriction that it needs to be reviewed before anything is done for the body shop or something like that. Is there, is that a possibility?
I'm gonna defer to legal?
I don't know, it's the.
I was just thinking about that, that's, that's a unique request, one that we don't see very often. I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I think that the plans need to be very specific as to what is proposed for the millwork, what is part of the millwork. And then there would be specific, and I'm just calling it the millwork showroom. There would need to be specific regulations and restrictions in the resolution because, as you can imagine, something like that can become difficult to enforce. But I do understand the concern. From a seeker standpoint, just so the board knows, it wouldn't be segmentation. This is actually a type two action for the reuse of a commercial building. So that isn't my concern, I'm thinking more along the lines of enforcement, but.
It becomes an enforcement issue, you know?
Yeah.
Unless we worry, no COs could be issued for other than the first, what is it, five thousand square feet of the, whatever the.
Yeah, so I think that the request could just need to be made very clear to the board. That way it could be tailored to Mr. Hartman's request.
We're not, how about this, we're not saying no, it's something we can definitely consider, but you would need to put a little pen to paper exactly what you're looking to have approved. You know, and say, this is what I want you to approve for us, this is all we're gonna do. And then the board could potentially take that into consideration and say, okay, we could agree to that, and this would be the only thing you're allowed to do. And any deviation of that or anything going forward, you would need to come back. You know, and don't forget, you could potentially screw yourself from, you know, another tenant, a different type of tenant in the rear too, based on what, you know, goes on in the front, based on parking and usage and stuff like that, too. So there is a little bit of a downside to not looking at it holistically as well. But, you know, that would again be your call to make.
Okay, so basically, I'm gonna talk to the owners, either I'm gonna come back next time with a full detail with, as I said, where parking, where the, where the cars are gonna be parked while they wait for parts, where the tow trucks are gonna be, either be a full detail or not have anything and have, as I say, ask for a, that if there's, whenever we have a tenant, there's no CEO, so we kind of get everything in your full plan for that. So it'd be one of the two.
Yeah, that sounds good, talk to your client and see what, how he wants to proceed.
Yeah.
All right, anything else from anybody in the board? No, all right, Larry, we'll see you soon then.
All right, thank you.
Take care. All right, next item on the agenda, Friedman, Blueberry Lane. Review and discuss revised site plan and special permit for proposed conversion of an existing one thousand square foot addition to a single family home to be used as a place of worship. Said property is located thirty-two Blueberry Lane in Highland Mills, as owned by Village Woodbury Tax Maps, section two one seven, block two, lot four dot two, I believe I saw Mr. Fusco, yes, I did.
Can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you, sir, good evening.
Good evening, great, very much the opportunity to present this for you. Again, we are, I believe, getting closer. I did speak out of the door this week, I believe, or maybe are we last, late last week? And we did agree to a couple of items. We are going to include a larger septic tank that was requested. We actually had an additional one that we were gonna add a five hundred square foot one to put it in tandem, but now we're just gonna replace the existing one thousand gallon tank with a two thousand gallon tank. We did do the water testing. And the water testing came out adequate for quality. However, for quantity, Natalie asked me to do, get a hydrologist in to verify the output of the well, which we've agreed to do. We had a couple of typos on the plan that we will correct. And also, there was a signature required, you know, on some of our paperwork, particularly where we were asking for the waiver and we were giving our rationale for the necessities for the waivers. There are a number of waivers that are required that were outlined before. One of them was parking, and I believe by putting in the bank parking, that we've reduced the parking waivers to acceptable standards. The other ones are some of the bump requirements. One of the questions that was asked was regarding the easement, and we had taken care of the easement for the driveways with a property line agreement between the two affected properties. Other than that, I think we're prepared to move forward. With respect, we request that we be considered for a, an approval subject to the conditions outlined by the engineers.
You're on mute, Chris.
Sorry, first thing, mouse, Natalie, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, sort of as Al just described, there are, you know, certain threshold issues here that have been discussed now on a number of occasions, so the waivers being one of them and what's required. They did submit a, we'll call it like a draft of a substantial burden request. It should be signed, we believe, also, the draft also indicates four bedrooms, where the plan's to pick, to pick three, so that should be revised. And also, it's noted that we still believe that a relief for the front yard setback is required. That was removed from this, from this submission by the applicant, but ultimately, I, I couldn't tell you the date now, but it's maybe in my memo. There was, we requested an interpretation from the building department on, you know, what would constitute the yards for this particular application. And that forty-two point five foot setback is within the front yard, so a waiver is required. Also, waivers required for parking, as Al describes, and currently where sixteen spaces are required, fourteen are proposed, that includes six land banked spaces. So that is a twelve and a half percent reduction in required parking, so that needs to be considered by the board at the appropriate time. We have also recommended that Phil's office kind of weigh in on this application in the future. And really, in general, it's just the layout of the parking is a little unusual. So we'll look for his comments on that, and since it does seem to be that there is going to be another iteration, we think that's appropriate. Al sort of describes the issues with the water. We previously opined that the test results for quality were acceptable. However, the testing that was provided for the quantity was sort of abbreviated, and we really didn't find, you know, evidence enough to opine on whether or not the well was capable of supporting the proposed uses. So we, I took a look at some of our files for other similar applications with individual wells, and they were required to perform a pumping test with report prepared by hydrogeologist. So we're recommending that be submitted currently. The code actually requires that adequate quantity and quality be proven prior to plat signing. So if the board moves, moves this application along, we think that that could be a condition of your action, essentially, the submission of that report and confirmed adequate by the village engineer. That's something we wanted to bring up. Al also discussed the septic tank issue, it's undersized per DEC regulations, so we've asked them to upsize it in accordance with those regulations, and that's also required by your code. And then I think the rest of our memo is either repeated or, you know, just require minor revisions. So I think that's all I really wanted to raise tonight, unless the board has any questions.
Thank you very much, Natalie, does anybody from the board have questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
I believe the accident said they're going to increase the septic. I was just going over the minutes from the last meeting where they said there'll be a maximum of twelve worshippers and I think fifteen children. Does that change with the increase in the septic?
That's, that's correct, and we did take that all into consideration.
Okay.
Any other questions in the board?
Yeah.
Kelly, I know, I think what really is hanging this application up now is substantial burden, right? Or the proof for substantial burden for the waiver.
It is, that seems to be the biggest thing, and I know that there was an attempt at a submission. It appears to be a attorney's letter, just from, you know, the references that were contained therein, but it is not on anyone's letterhead and it's not signed. And there were some discrepancies, as Natalie noted, between that letter and between the application that's actually before you. So I can't really evaluate that. I don't know who wrote it, where it came from, to really weigh in on the substantial burden for the board.
So we're, we're back, we're back into this conundrum again, that's what we really need in order to, to kind of wrap this application up at this point, is the, whether the substantial burden claims can be made, so the waivers can be issued based on those factors. So it sounds like we need the letter resubmitted on, let ahead from either the attorney representing the congregation or the congregation itself, signed by the head of the congregation, would either way be acceptable?
Absolutely, I just, it's hard to tell where it came from or if it was copied from somewhere else. I just need that information so that we can move it forward.
Do you?
Get that signed for you, not a problem.
Sign and let ahead, Al. Sign and let ahead, Al.
Right.
Okay. Um, I, I, I think with that, I think I think we're okay. It would be in an okay spot to do a public hearing at least, right? And kind of continue to move forward here.
I, I think that that would be fine. I mean, obviously the board needs to have the discussions on the waivers. Um, but there's been a lot of improvements to the plans that were made. Um, I, I would agree.
Yeah. And then hopefully with the public hearing, there's the substantial burden letter would be updated and submitted. And then the board could actually at the close of the public hearing potentially uh, weigh those burdens and make a determination based on that letter.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so that being said, feedback from the board. Uh, this application has been around, wow, by what, 18 months now? Almost two years, I think his application's been floating around the board.
At this, at this point, I think we should reschedule public hearing.
I, I, I agree with you, Tommy. I think we should keep moving the ball forward. Um, so Al, do you think you could get the letter on, on letterhead and sign uh, for a public hearing on the 18th before that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Cause that is, you, you understand that is like really the crux that's holding us up here right now.
I understand.
Okay. All right. So I will offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for May 18th. Oh, Tommy, you can, uh, you, you know, we're gonna go with Mr. Catagio.
I was waiting, nobody else spoke up.
We're gonna shake it up a little bit tonight. Second by Mr. Catagio. Any questions? Oh, you all right? Evan, I see you disappeared for a second.
Yeah, my, my cat just broke, uh, part of my setup.
So did you hear the motion? We had a motion for a public hearing on the 18th? Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. So I'll get that back to us as soon as you can. So, uh, legal can review it and this board can uh, review it so we can have that hopefully the same night as the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good.
You too. Take care. Okay. Moving right along. KJ Water Treatment Facility. Review and discuss documents submitted for site plan approval of our proposed water treatment facility located at 147 Seven Spring Road, Highland Mills, known as a village of Woodbury Tax Map, section 213, block one, lot 49. All right. John, I guess you're presenting tonight?
Uh, yes. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's John Capello. Um, with Jacob Woods and Gubits and, um, here, um, subbing for, uh, Marissa Logan. Marissa has, uh, uh, taken a job with the D E C. So she's, uh, oh, it's the, our, our loss is the D E C's, uh, game. She's an excellent attorney and they, uh, they should be very happy with her. So I will be kind of taking the reins on, uh, this project. I am going to this evening rely a lot on Tom Shuttle, the engineer who's, um, al- also with me. And, uh, really we're here to, uh, continue to move the ball, uh, forward on this application. Back in, uh, March, a, uh, the board's request that Architectural Review Board, uh, forum was, uh, submitted uh, along with a letter from, um, our engineer responding to the comments of, uh, your engineer. Uh, some additional photos of the site as described in the engineer's letter. Um, a set of D O H, um, drawings from February 22 and also some uh, civil, electrical, architectural and structural items. And then subsequent to that, I believe the full, uh, SWIP was filed. I understand there's a, um, you know, a comment letter, but we're hoping here, um, to, um, move the, the, the ball forward and hopefully move towards, uh, setting the public hearing on this matter. I'm going to turn it over at this point unless the board, uh, would like to speak to, uh, Mr. Shuttle to give, uh, just a summary of what we've submitted and the substance of those documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chuck.
Good afternoon, um, everyone. This is Tom Shuttle with, uh, C D M Smith. I am, uh, one of the designers of this facility and if it's okay, I'd like to just share my screen, uh, to provide a update of the presentation that we gave back in January.
Uh, go ahead. You should be able to show your screen, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Please let me know, uh, when you can see my PowerPoint presentation should be momentarily.
Yep, there you go.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, I'll be as brief as possible. We've been before this board, uh, twice before and, you know, we're making some very good progress hopefully on this project in addressing the comments from your team. Um, the need of the project remains the same as, uh, we discussed last time. This project is being undertaken to provide an adequate and abundant supply of water to the Village of Curious Joe. Uh, the, it consists of several phases. Uh, this is just to refresh, uh, the board's memory. Phase one is complete. It was approximately six and a half miles of transmission main. It involved a pump station construction and now, uh, which is referred to as the Mountainville Pump Station. Also the Ridge Road Pump Station and a disinfection slash chlorination station, which presently exists at the Seven Springs Road site in question. Phase two, uh, is presently underway and, and a construction of the approximate balance of the connection pipe to the Catskill Aqueduct is has resumed and is expected to be completed in this next construction season. Uh, phase two also includes the water treatment plant, which is a subject of this presentation. And then, uh, aqueduct tapping facilities, which are the final connection between the transmission main and the Catskill Aqueduct, um, which is subject to approval of the city of New York. Uh, the way I've structured this presentation is to kind of, um, line by line, go through the comments we received based, uh, on the last presentation to the board in January. And these are all kind of summarized in our response letter of March 16th with, which John referred to earlier in this, in this, um, meeting. Uh, one of the comments, what we were requested to provide a full set of plans for review and we, we did that. All the, all the documents related to the proposed water treatment facility were provided. We had, uh, previously, um, a bridge that set just to provide some clarity, but that full set was provided. And I, I do note that there were some questions or some comments resulting from uh, subsequent review that were provided to us on April 29th, which is last week. So we haven't, we haven't addressed those comments in this presentation and, and we'll do so once we've had a chance to let them seep in. So these are really, uh, mostly speaking to the, the comments we noted during the prior, prior meeting. Um, there was a comment at that meeting about, uh, utilizing this site for the storage of materials and, uh, one of the, one of the board members noted that there was some, uh, snow removal equipment had been stored back in January that has subsequently been removed. And, uh, as of today, I believe that site is completely clear of any kind of stored materials. And the site I'm referring to is the already developed portion of that site, which includes the disinfection facility that's out there now. Uh, we were, we were, uh, quite a bit of discussion about the screening of the site from Seven Springs Road and yeah, this is a little tough to see and my apologies, but this is all in the full size sets that were submitted. Uh, we did make some changes to the plantings in front of the, the, the facility. So Seven Springs Road would be at the top of the, uh, of the page here. Uh, the plantings that were revised are all along this area here and along the front of the tank. And in our response letter of March 16th, we did provide a summary of what those plantings consisted of, what their install heights were and what their mature heights are. I won't repeat those specifics here unless, uh, there's a, a question directly related to those, but, uh, uh, I'll, I'll let the, the contents of the March 16th letter speak for itself and answer any questions, you know, at the conclusion of the presentation. Uh, so this was included in that set that was submitted, uh, back in March. As was a, uh, summary of what the anticipated noise levels are at the site. We've made some revisions, uh, to what was presented back in January and those revisions stem largely from uh, an enhanced enclosure design that was included in the specifications that were also provided to the planning board on March 16th. And, uh, we were able to make some reductions in the, the noise propagation from the emergency generator. And if you recall, uh, from the last presentation, uh, we discussed the use of this generator and the fact that it would only be used and, and in the event that there was a power failure to the facility in an emergency basis or during some routine exercising of the generator, which would occur roughly on a monthly basis. And those would always be scheduled during the daytime. So, um, uh, the noise level at the property line is shown here is, uh, is, uh, 64 decibels D V A. I believe is what, yeah, that's what we have here. So, uh, and that would be, uh, with the enhanced uh, sound attenuation in the generator enclosure that, that was included in the revised specification that was submitted. Um, uh, John mentioned earlier SWIP, uh, we did prepare and submit a SWIP, uh, that was reviewed and we haven't really had a, a, a chance to dig into, uh, the, the board's comments on that SWIP, but we will in due course, uh, provide a separate response to that. So the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan was prepared and had been submitted. Um, there was some discussion about this wastewater holding tank. Um, we, we've been batting this one around for a while. You know, we, we, we did with the board's help get approval for the, uh, well 33, which is on the site. And, uh, that well is, I believe in operation at the present time and, uh, we, we contemplated how we would best be able to protect that well. And one of the things we, uh, discussed internally was, you know, eliminating one of the drivers was eliminating the septic system on site and utilizing the wastewater holding tank in lieu of a, a, a traditional septic tank and leaching field. And there were some questions about the size of that tank at the last meeting. We have since downsized that tank considerably to, to a 10,000 gallon tank. And, uh, as you may all recall at the last presentation, uh, we discussed the use of this facility and the occupancy of the facility. It's going to be intermittently occupied and the waste that is likely to enter that tank would consist of two sources, one being the laboratory that's provided, uh, on the site for this, you know, the occasional visitors to the site as well as the, um, or, you know, the routine what disposal of, of treated water samples and raw water samples that would be, uh, collected during the normal course of operation. Those, you know, there is a, a, a drain and a sampling sink that would also drain to that tank. We do have calculations to support the size of that tank and, uh, you know, just looking at the comments from the May 20, the April 29th letter, uh, that we received last week. I, I know there's still some discussion and concerns as to whether or not this is an approvable, uh, setup with the, um, would be approved by the, uh, Department of Health. Uh, you know, we will have that conversation with the health department at the appropriate time. Uh, they are in fact reviewing these, these designs as well and, um, we do believe that it's something that could be permitted and, um, and, uh, will, would like to continue to pursue that course of action. Uh, with regard to the zoning tables, uh, we did include as requested at the last presentation, uh, a list of the, uh, you know, a table summarizing the zoning requirements. Uh, uh, again, uh, looking at the April 29th uh, comment letter. I know there are some additional requests being made and we haven't had time to address those, uh, in anticipation of it or in preparation for this meeting, but we will look at those comments and, um, uh, you know, uh, update this as required. Board may recall, uh, considerable amount of discussion on the architectural finish. Uh, the, as originally designed, uh, we had a, uh, metal building with a masonry found perimeter foundation. And, uh, we had provided at the previous, uh, um, board meeting, a color palette and, uh, there was a request made to, uh, depart from the metal skin building. Uh, we looked at alternatives and we came up with, uh, this particular material, which is a, it, it's a non-metallic material. Uh, it's a manufactured panel system tongue and groove and, uh, we, we consulted with the, uh, the village who was willing to make um, the modifications to the building to accommodate this, um, this, um, different material, which also is available in, in a number of, you know, uh, different colors, the colors that we presented in the renderings that were updated to reflect this were attached. So, uh, it, the colors are a little bit less. Here's a, a shot of what the building looks like. I, I know there were some concerns about the visibility of the, the, the vertical seams in the, in the metal building that was proposed originally. So we've, uh, updated the renderings to reflect this new skin system. Um, and that's what's shown here on the various options. So these renderings were all provided from different views coming from Seven Springs Road uh, to reflect the change in materials, uh, which are, it's a little bit hard to tell, uh, from these views that, you know, the impact of the change of the materials, but they have been incorporated here. It did result in, uh, additional costs because the, the skin is a heavier skin. So we, we, we did need to go back and modify the, uh, building, um, skeleton to accommodate, uh, the heavier materials, but, uh, the village agreed to do that. So what you see here is the modified version of this. It's hard to kind of tell, but it does look somewhat similar to what was proposed originally, but, uh, I do have the original, uh, renderings in here too. So the colors are a little bit more muted and um, you know, from this distance, you really couldn't tell the, uh, you know, the, uh, the metal, the fluting on the metal, original metal skin, uh, but uh, that would no longer be here in these, in this revised, uh, with the revised, um, building construction materials. Uh, also, uh, there was some, uh, questions about, uh, the site migration. My apologies. I think the drawings we sent originally in did not include the, um, the actual units of what these contour lines are, but, uh, they are in foot candles and, um, this is a contour map of the, uh, site migration from a variety of uh, site fixtures that are on, on the building itself. And in the cases of, uh, the exterior lighting, that, that lighting is above all the entrance doors and in the back of the building adjacent to the uh, the sludge or bios, not the biosolts, but the residuals drying lagoon. Um, there is also some exterior lighting on the backside of the building away from Seven Springs Road. So I think the most intense, uh, light is point one foot candle at the property line, which is, which is quite low. So that, this is in the drawings and we can send you a revised drawing that actually includes the units of the contours, which I believe the original seminal did not include. So we'll send that along. So that's kind of a summary of, you know, the major items that were discussed at the last meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, and to the extent that I can address some of the comments that were raised in the April 29th, but we really, you know, given that the, the turnaround and when we received this late last week, we really haven't dug into it and prepared a formal response to any of those comments at this point.
Okay. Does anybody from the board have questions on the presentation? I did ask, uh, I did request if you could just submit this presentation, uh, to the building department, uh, so they could add it to the file. That would be great. Thank you very much. All right. Natalie, you wanna go ahead?
Sure. Thank you. Um, so since their last appearance for this particular part of the project, I think that was in January and since then, um, the applicant, uh, bifurcated uh, well 33, um, which was reviewed separately and, and since approved, um, the submission did include a SWIP. We had a number of technical comments on that, which I won't review them in detail, although, um, similar to our requests previously. And as the applicant provided, um, we'll look for a detailed response letter, um, to those items identified. Um, we also had comments on water and sewer. Um, Tom mentioned, uh, some of our remaining comments on the holding tank. And really I think that, um, you know, whether or not it's going to be the D O H or the D E C, that discussion should be had currently. Um, because if it's not going to be within their review, that impacts your review and essentially how that's handled is all a part of your site plan review. So, um, you know, we will want some resolution to that and, um, our memo notes some additional details that would be required also. Um, including sort of justification for the size of the tank, which, uh, Tom said that there are calculations supporting that. Um, with respect to grading, which is obviously significant for this site, we've asked for a cut and fill in. we've asked for a cut and fill analysis, which I don't think has been provided to date. And essentially that'll just help determine whether or not there's going to be an import or export of soils and sort of conditions surrounding that as part of your potential action. We have remaining comments on chemical fuel storage and delivery that are repeated. And I know a lot of that'll be reviewed with the DEC, but some of that.
Natalie, I just, if you don't mind, we did present at the last meeting a list of all the chemicals. And I know we, we discussed it extensively. I went through each and every one of the chemicals with the board at that time. I can resubmit that. It was part of the presentation and it may not be in your file, but we did pre- prepare a slide, you know, summarizing the chemical storage quantities as well as the uses for, and, and, and I, I think we might've even provided some MSDS information. So I can resubmit that. I, I know we talked about it at the very first meeting and it was included in the last presentation.
No, that's okay. You know, my apologies as if I missed it. And I'm not sure if it was similar to this application, if it was part of the presentation slide and not something that we received. But either way, if you could resubmit that, that would be great.
I will do that. Yep.
We did have some questions on the layout of the facility with respect to the chlorine building, which, you know, again, Tom, we always provide our comments as a courtesy to you to sort of give you a heads up about the comments that you'll receive tonight. You know, obviously we don't respect or expect you to have answers today. There are other access site distances and turning movements that we are going to defer to colleagues on their opinion for. Although I know that was discussed at a previous meeting, I think there, that still needs to be resolved. We've asked for additional details on the retaining walls, um, including top of wall and bottom of wall elevations. The applicant did respond to comments received at the last planning board meeting related to landscaping. And Tom mentioned that he provided those details on mature height and spread of these, uh, the various shrubs and trees that are going to be provided. We did recommend that that be translated to the plans as well, so that, you know, when the board is reviewing it, it's, you know, kind of a quick comparison of, you know, what's, what's being proposed where? And, you know, how is that going to effectively screen the various site plan elements? With respect to ARB, um, although an ARB package was submitted, ours did not include the form that typically lists the materials, the colors and the manufacturer. So that's something that the applicant should submit in the future.
I think that was in the letter Natalie that went back to you on, um, uh, March sixteenth. All those attachments were part of the, uh, part of that submittal that you should have received from Marissa Logan as attachments to that letter. It's in the package that she copied me on that was included in the FTP. And it was the same material I just showed you in the presentation. So it's the manufacturers of, of the panel system and as well as the color chart. It's essentially the same material.
Okay. The board does require that form. So if it was submitted and I just didn't have it as part of my package, I apologize again, um, you know.
You know, I have the attachment called ARB application. And it seems like that form is actually missing from what was circulated. So if you could resubmit that, when, maybe when you submit the PowerPoint, because maybe it might've just been left out from the electronic submission that was distributed. Cause I was just looking for that as well, when you said it was in that letter. And I'm like, no, I specifically looked for it.
Yeah, I didn't, uh, I didn't send it. I didn't hit the send button on the package. So I, you know, I, I couldn't swear to exactly what was included until after I saw it. But I will definitely go back and look at the air.
Thank you.
The ARB forms in there. My apologies if we missed it. I, I thought it was in there.
One of the things that we mentioned at the last meeting is in addition to the building itself, there are some very relevant site plan elements like the storage tank. And obviously being considerate of, you know, what that is and, you know, not overextending. I think there are certain architectural treatments that the board could consider, including the color of the tank. You know, and, and whether there was any surfacing that could be applied to sort of blend the feature within the neighborhood. On ridge preservation, um, the applicant did discuss the siding that they submitted is metal with a stucco-like surfacing. So while the code doesn't permit metal siding like it does stucco, it's not clear if a finish like stucco is conforming. So maybe Kelly can opine on that or it needs to be sort of clarified. Similarly, the applicant should confirm the finish on the roof panels are non-glossy as required by the code. Seeker is completed and similar to well thirty-three, we've requested additional documents, just whatever the final decision was or specific findings associated with that action in the EAF. I know I did look back at the well thirty-three and I thought that those materials were specific to the well. Um, and I know that there are others, obviously with the buildings. So we'd just like to review that for the record. We did submit some comments on the lighting plans, um, and the details associated with the fixtures that are being proposed. They should be nighttime friendly, dark sky, green globe, green globe compliant. So we'll look for that. One of the things that we also raised again in this memo was sort of a revised generator sound plan, which I think you just showed in your presentation. So we'll look at that a little closer. Although I would request that you be considerate of the fact that the code has requirements for day and nighttime sound attended or sound levels at the property lines. And although it's expected that the generator would only be exercised during the day and not at night, those emergency situations, um, we want the generator to be compliant with those requirements. So.
Even in an emergency situation, I, you know, the way, the way we rationalize this and maybe we're being a little bit, you know, fast and loose. But, you know, if there was a real emergency that required emergency response, you know, you'd have sirens, which probably wouldn't comply with a property line noise code requirement as well. So we're, we're kind of looking at it really more as, you know, from a perspective of, uh, you know, when the thing is being exercised is the governing criteria for establishing the, the fence line, uh, noise, ambient noise level. So that would be the, uh, you know, during the daytime, not, not at night. You know, that would be an extraordinary situation if it was an emergency and the thing was being used.
You could also go with a multi-day power outage as well. That has happened up here quite a few times. So that wouldn't really be an emergency at that point. That would just be, it's running because it has to run because there's no power. So, you know, I don't know how I would feel having a diesel or natural gas generator running with my window open in the summer when it's eighty-five degrees out. So, you know, you gotta be considerate of that too, uh, that there could be a multi, multi-day event.
Usually in those multi-day defense events, there's a declaration of a, of a, of a disaster or emergency by the municipality.
How about being good neighbors? How about we just look at it like that? Let's, let's just try to be good neighbors here. That's all. You know, there are residents across the street and there are building lots next to the site and everybody wants to be a good neighbor. I, I know for one, I take my portable generator and I put it in my backyard so my neighbor next door doesn't have to listen to it. So regardless of what declaration gets signed, but I digress.
Right. It's kind of hard to forecast when these emergency situations will happen and for how long. And I think, you know, to Chris's point, it's, um, you know, the purpose is to, um, alleviate any impacts to surrounding neighbors and, and just to conform to the code. So I think, you know, that it is a requirement of the code is, is sort of the simplest answer that it has to be complying. And I think that you're not that far off. You know, we talked last time about moving the generator further away from the property line. That could be an option or, um, you know, increasing your level of sound attenuation. So other than that though, I, there's just other minor comments that I don't think are really a heavy lift for a future revision. You know, just where, what's your refuse? Where is it going to be located? Are there going to be dumpsters, uh, emergency contact information? We had some suggestions for notes on the plans and, um, I think, oh, the other one, the only other thing I wanted to mention is related to the full site plan that was, or the full plan set that was submitted. There were indications about the Ridge Road pump station and the potential for four pumps where, um, three were previously approved by the board. And actually that was a specific condition of that resolution, um, that the board had not considered the impacts of an additional pump. So, um, we'll look to, um, have you confirm that that's not actually going to be constructed? Or if it is, then it's possible that an amended approval for that site would be required.
Yep. That would be done if and when that, that was, that, that has been, would be contemplated by the village. At this point, it's not part of this phase two project.
Okay. I know. And it's tough too, because I know that some of those plans that were submitted are not really necessarily relevant to the site plan issues, but, um, I think it's something that's now shown and presented and is essentially non-conforming with a prior action of the board. So it would either have to be a condition of this approval or I defer to Kelly on how that kind of would be handled. But in general, I think it should be removed from the plans. That's all I have, everybody.
That's it?
No, Natalie, keep going.
On and on. You guys have to just stop me.
It's almost ten. Keep going. No, I'm kidding.
Uh, anybody, uh, um, have questions for Natalie? Uh, I know we lost Evan. He's having some technical issues. He just asked me, is there a darker green or a less harsh white? Actually, I think the white's going to be a problem in, uh, rich preservation, right? Yeah.
Yeah, you've had NPV by in on that before and these stark white kind of color has not worked with your ridge preservation provisions.
So you had a couple, there were some other colors on that chart.
And likewise on the tank itself, if there's a, you know, I think the village would be amenable to any color selection that the board would recommend on that, you know, as long as we're not looking at making a kind of crazy camouflage color that's going to require all kinds of taping. And I think there's, they'd be amenable to, uh, you know, your suggestions on the color of the tank.
Chartuse? Yeah, I think, um, the tank, we'll get back to you on it. I want the board just to think about whatever standard kind of color you'd want to see on there. And when you resubmit the PowerPoint, well, the board can look at the other colors that were on that chart and then we can give you some feedback on that because you're going to have another submission anyway. So, uh, we, the board, I think, take, use that as a takeaway and just look at those other colors. So we can give the applicants some direction there. Well, thank you very much for doing, changing from the metal to the wood look, the non-metal, the wood, more wood looking. I think it will fit into the neighborhood a little bit better than that metal building does. So thank you for that. I know we got some outstanding items, but I kind of feel like we, we've got enough to do. We've got like a lot of technical outstanding items. I think we've got enough to do, probably set a public hearing, right? Then we can, we can move forward there. So I'll do this. Now, I know you said you have, you need some time to respond to the submissions from Natalie and team. If we scheduled a public hearing for the eighteenth, would that be too soon for your team to get a submission together?
Uh, we will get it done. You know, we will, you know, if there's a possibility, I mean, it depends. Actually, I think we can, I think we can accomplish that. Assuming we don't, uh, you know, if we can make a commitment, if the only way we can get the generator to work out, that's the biggest design change that I would categorize in terms of what we've presented now. And the, the wastewater holding tank, if those issues can be tabled for the public hearing, particularly the wastewater holding tank, because we need to go to DOH. You know, we don't control the timeline of their review of that. So I can't, I can't give you a, a firm answer on that. But if you can make that a conditional requirement of your approval down the road and if we have to do something else, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think we can, we can work with those two things as far as conditions. If, when we get there as far as the wastewater holding tank and the generator, you're there. Like, I feel like if you move it like three more feet, you're probably, you're probably there. So that should be a relatively easy fix.
Yep. And well, interestingly enough, I mean, you know, the surprise, maybe surprisingly, maybe not surprisingly, the change just on the, uh, on the enclosure was a hundred thousand dollar change to the budget of the project. Believe it or not, I mean, you would think that it wouldn't be that expensive to put insulation in there, but it was a hundred thousand dollar change to make that, uh, make that sound attenuation a little bit more robust. So it's, it's not like we're talking about pennies here or even, you know, the, the, the cost of redesign. It's, there's real money in there and that's one of the reasons why we were, uh, uh, you know, we're, and, and we're looking at another order of magnitude to upsize it even more. So that's part of, you know, the dynamics we're dealing with here. It's real money. So, you know, barring those two major changes, you know.
Just want to clarify one thing so that it's clear for the record, that the two things that we're talking about would be for potential conditions on any potential approval by the board. The phrase you used was table it for the public hearing and I know I.
That's not what I meant. It was a condition of the approval. That's kind of.
Both John and I were sitting there going, no, not tabled for the public hearing. We'll talk about it on the plan. And then potentially if that can't be resolved and it would be any potential condition, because we don't want to then slow it, slow it down. Point is not to slow down.
For how I communicated that, my intention was to say, let's, let's make it a condition of the approval. And, you know, not, you know, assuming we're on board, we can come to a resolution for those items. That's agreeable to you. It, it shouldn't stand in the way of the public hearing relative to the design. That's, that's what I meant. I apologize.
Just making sure we're on the same page. When you see both lawyers start to shake their head, no, that's usually a sign.
Yeah. When opposing counsel agrees with each other? Does that mean like it's going to rain dogs and kittens and cats and stuff?
I, I, I like to refer to myself as coordinating and assisting counsel with.
Is that the politically correct term this day, these days?
We're, we're working together to come to a mutually acceptable project.
I'll, I'll go with it. I'll go with it. All right. So with that, I'll offer a motion to set a public hearing for, uh, May. Yeah, I'm in the right month, May eighteenth, because apparently I went back in time the other day. So May eighteenth. Anybody second? Michael, okay. Any questions on that? All right. So a little bit of homework for you guys, but we'll have the public hearing, get the submission into us and, uh, we'll go from, we'll go from there. We'll see you in two weeks.
Attention.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, guys. May anyone else want to hang around? I think we're done for tonight. It's, we got twenty minutes to ten. And we haven't seen the cat again, Kelly.
He came over by my feet when you started talking. I was like, Arthur, if you saw me going like this, he was there. I don't know what it is. He likes the sound of your voice. He's just coming over.
Poor cat.
Oh, I, I think he's tired of hearing me talk is what it is. He's like, oh, somebody else. Let me hear what they have to say.
Oh, it's more land use stuff. Oh.
Exactly.
All right. So I thank everybody. Another long but productive meeting this evening. I think we moved a lot of stuff forward. So, uh, I hate that term. I'm sorry. Uh, we made progress on a lot of items this evening. So with that, I'll offer a motion to close. Second, Tommy jumps all over that one. Nobody's.
I was waiting for a response to the other one. Nobody wanted to jump up. I'm like, I did too many ready tonight.
Any questions? All right. All right. Have a good night, everybody. See you in two weeks.
Good night.